It's only nine through thirteen, you know, just half points.
Only the budget. The time is four thirty PM Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of twenty-four September two thousand and twenty-four is called to order. Ask those in our council chambers if you have not signed the clipboard by the back door, you would please do so before you leave and ask everyone to please put their phones on vibrate. Roll call of members, Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt, uh, Kevin Ballard.
We're both here.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt Markgraf.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here in our council chambers, those joining us by Zoom. Remember, our city council meetings are on the Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also available on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evening. Just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Thursday, September twenty-six, ten to eleven AM at the library conversations with the mayor. Remember, Maplewood State Park Leaf Days are September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and also October fifth and sixth, those of both are Saturdays and Sundays. And our next city council meeting is scheduled here at the city council chambers on October eighth at four thirty PM. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments if you aren't on the agenda? Anyone? Seeing none. Item number three is additions, deletions to the agenda. I have one addition, item number fourteen, pickleball courts. Item number fourteen, pickleball courts. Any other additions or deletions?
Move to approve with the addition of pickleball.
Second. Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number four, approval of consent agenda. Item four A, approval of council minutes, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Four B is approval of accounts payable listing. Four C is intent to certify parcel R seven six zero 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 nine nine zero five seven nine zero zero two. This is at six one four Southeast Second Avenue, amount of two hundred and eighty dollars. Item four D is, one is staff report, police report, and four D two is liquor store report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, discussion.
Do we know, I mean, what's the reason for the intent to certify for C? Is that water or?
Um, it was unpaid fire bill.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Uh, let's go on down to item number six, Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center change request number eleven. Kelly Januzewski could not be here this evening, but we have Scott from Design Intent out of Fergus Falls, and Scott is going to talk to us about the request and also the schedule. Scott?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly sends his regret, his regrets, boy, I'm going to have a hard time speaking today, so bear with me, I'll do my best that I can. You guys in your packet should have looked at, hopefully, change request number eleven, which would end up being a change order if you guys agree to it, has to do with winter conditions for the masonry on the building over at the Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center. The project got started a little bit late, I can't remember what exact date it was, we were waiting on some plumbing plan review, and then also I think the state was requesting we not start because they hadn't quite made up their mind on the hundred, on the one point five million dollar bond money, I think it was, they didn't, anything we did before, they approved it, they wouldn't, you know, reimburse us for that sort of thing. So things were slow to start, and then we still had a pretty good winter, but in the end, it looks like Kelly had, Kelly and I went through it, Kelly wrote down on the second page, or maybe it's the first page for you guys, the start dates of when winter conditions started and the end dates of each hour that the masons worked on, you know, keeping the masonry warm. We can't let it freeze when it's curing, because I don't know if you guys know, when mortar freezes before it's totally cured, it turns just to sand, so it's no longer, you know, held together like a glue. So we had to keep heating it until it was fully cured, which is about a thirty day process. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the council?
That's a lot of money, Scott, and.
Yes, sir.
Don't they take that into account, delays, like the guys do on the street out here, they've had rain delays, and that's just part of the bidding process.
Yeah, yeah. If, if we would have had it in the specs for winter conditions, they would have put money into it, you know, you would have paid more, they would have had it in their bid, so your bids would have been higher, if that makes sense. In other words, if I would say, okay, we got to have winter conditions in this project, then you need, they would go in and say, okay, we were planning on having the building done before winter conditions, but it didn't turn out that way, and because we didn't have winter conditions in the contract to begin with, then they, they basically need to get paid for that, if that makes sense, that's a, kind of makes sense.
I'm kind of confused on what's left on the building that they're working on, because I haven't seen anybody working down there on the building.
So what's left now, and there's also a new schedule, I don't know if you saw that or not, but what, I was just down there today looking at it, and it looks like for the building, there's still some sealing on the walls to do, so the burnished block gets a sealant on it, so that it's easier to wash down, so that's, that's not done. The floor inside the building is not done, the epoxy floor that's going in, that was supposed to start today, but I don't see that they had started it today. So, and then there's a little bit of cabinetry work yet in there, the countertop for the admissions counter, that's not in yet, and then they need to set the partitions for the changing rooms in the, in the family changing area, and then they also need to set like the toilets and the sinks and the countertops in the bathrooms, and none of that really can get done until after the flooring is done.
You didn't use the word mortar in any of that, so.
No, not that, this is all from, this is all from this winter, so winter conditions from this past winter, this is all from the past winter, this, so this work has already been done and completed, so they're just asking for reimbursement now for the extra monies that they spent for the project.
Scott, is there heat in the building now?
No, the building is, the only place there's heat is in the mechanical pump room where all the water's at and the pumps are at, that will be heated to about fifty degrees in the wintertime, the rest of the building is going to be allowed to be frozen in the wintertime, there's no heat in there.
So will they have time to do the floor and the toilets and all that?
That is, they're supposed to have started today, hopefully tomorrow, so, yeah, there won't be, they have it scheduled so that, they have me doing my inspection, the final inspection on October eleventh, so technically this project should be done October tenth for what's known as substantial completion, then my team goes in, we look over everything, we write a punch list up, and we give it back to them saying, these are the things we still think need work, and they're usually not a lot, it's minor type stuff, and then they, we give them two weeks to finish it up completely before we give them a certification that they're done.
I know the question's been asked a lot.
Yeah.
But I can't remember the answer, so if substantial completion is October, what do you say?
Eleventh, yep, yeah.
Are they planning on filling it this, this fall?
We still have to fill the pool, we have to fill it and let it freeze, but I think they're going to fill it, they're going to train Brian and his staff on how to run the pool, and then they're going to drain it down to a certain level, and then it'll stay, the water will stay, because we can't leave the deep end empty, it has to be filled with water. So they will fill the pool yet this year, that's my understanding.
Scott, after you develop that punch list, how long does the contractor have to take care of those items?
Uh, they're supposed to be done in two weeks, sometimes it takes up to a month, it's some, this is the time of year where everybody's trying to button up everything, so the subcontractors are, you know, in ten different places, that sort of thing, so the goal is to get them all here and get it done, that, that's our goal, and that's why we have, we don't pay them everything, you know, on every single pay, pay request we have, uh, help me out here, retainage, retainage, we keep that, and they don't get paid that until, until they're done, or, that's not actually true though either, because there's a state law now that says that they get paid a certain amount of days afterwards, whether they're done or not, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's not the way I would do it, but that is state law.
Talking about an albatross before, this is turning into an albatross now.
They're close, this is, have you been over there? It's really looking good.
There every day.
It is really getting close now.
So where would this money, I mean, is, does this come out of the project fund, or how does that, and is that available to, to use?
Yes, there is.
Yep.
Well, I move that we reimburse the twenty-seven thousand six sixteen forty-four.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anything else, Scott?
Nope, that's it, unless, um.
Can you give in another report in October then?
We certainly can, would you like one? I can come back, let's say, when's your next meeting? October?
Eighth.
Eighth.
Is there another one after that? I'd rather do it after the.
Last, last Tuesday of the month.
Last Tuesday, October.
October twenty-ninth.
October twenty-ninth. I mean, we can make them come back either the first week or the third, so.
Which would be better as far as?
I think it would be better to do it on the, once we get a punch list and stuff, you know, it'd be nice when we're basically.
Twenty-ninth then.
Twenty-ninth, if that works for you guys, right before Halloween, I can dress up like a witch if you like, or something like that, so.
Would you include a copy of the punch list?
I could, absolutely, matter of fact, I will provide it to Lance, at the same time I give it to the contractor, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Item number seven is EDA update, and there's a few items there, and they were in your packet, and Jordan's here to speak to them. The first one is the housing study, I'm looking for an approval on that.
Yes, I am, good evening. We had CDA Planning Department come to Pelican Rapids and work remotely on an updated housing study for the city. That housing study has been completed and reviewed by the Housing Study Steering Committee, and I'm just looking for a motion to accept the housing study on, from you guys, and I'm here for any questions, if you have any questions on it, but.
Are there paper copies available?
There's a few copies available that you could take and, and bring back, it's also on the website.
I'll make a motion to approve the report. Got it extensively on here, I mean, it's interesting, I don't know if I understood the whole thing, but.
We have a motions or a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
A home sold for one point two million in town?
It must have, yes. Yep, so the majority of the housing study data is pulled from the census, a lot of it's pulled from online tracking systems, we had Annie Nichols as the head of CDA Planning, and then there was two other CDA employees who worked specifically in planning who came to Pelican Rapids, I think, three times over the summer, and then sat and data collected on the computer quite a few times. I had honestly minimal to do with it besides the window shield survey where I get to assess everybody's houses, but yes, everything, all the information has been vetted.
I looked on Zillow, but I didn't help either.
Any more discussion?
Well, yeah, what will they, so what's the next step with the housing study? What do they do with it now? Now that we have a new housing study, what do we, does that just take up shelf space, or what do we do with it?
No, I think that's the exact opposite of what we would hope for, where I'm working with the EDA to pull together a strategic planning session, if any of you would like to participate in that, to talk about goals for next year, obviously, housing will be one of them, but there's a list of recommendations after this study, and I want to go through that list of recommendations and then talk about creating a plan to get started on any of the suggestions for housing. So I guess this is a timer, any of you interested on being, in being a part of that conversation? Separate from an EDA meeting or a council meeting, it would just be a, an additional meeting, but it needs to happen, I think, so, so we have this as a tool instead of taking up shelf space.
We scheduled the time for that, didn't we?
I took some times from you guys at our EDA meeting, and then I would like to get some planning commission members involved as well, and anybody else from city council.
I would, I would assume it would have to be posted, assuming there may be a quorum of.
Mm-hmm, yep, and the study's also important when talking to developers to show that the city has a plan and the city knows what the residents are looking for in order to grow, so it's a great tool to hand to developer in conversation.
Any more discussion?
Did you look at getting water and sewer installed in some of these places that we have kind of designated as areas to build in and?
I think that would be a, a great conversation at the strategic planning meeting, I've, I think that we should look into everything, I also know that having people look into things costs money, so, so identifying some areas and, you know, getting some costs figured out, if it's really feasible to move forward in one area, or if we need to redirect to another, but as of right now, no, I think the only thing that we've really looked into is a few lots on the southwest side of town, but I think there's more potential for larger development with the recommendations in the study.
Okay.
Do you want to be a part of, a part of the conversation?
Well, we'll talk about that.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Next item is SCDP update, Jordan?
The city has worked with Ottertail County HRA in applying for the Small Cities Development Program Funds. This process started late summer, early fall last year with surveys being pushed out to the community to try to gauge interest, those surveys were used as supplemental material for a competitive application with the state, and we were recently finally awarded, the city was awarded nine hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of a grant through the Small Cities Program. So it's going to be broken up between commercial rehab projects as well as homeowner rehab projects, so there's nothing applicable for a landlord to use on a building that they're not the primary owner or resident in, but if you live in city limits and qualify as far as income guidelines, the HRA will reach out to people who filled out a survey and see if their project is applicable, and then move forward through the program with them. I think what I really wanted to share is people have been asking me about this since last fall, it's a, it was a big project, so I just really want to be clear that the, the award was delayed by months from the state, so we just got the award notice, now we need to do training and implementation of program guidelines and how people can, can move forward through these dollars, so the county HRA will reach out to anybody who filled out a survey in the order they were received, so the less people call them will probably help get the program moving forward a little bit quicker, so I think the anticipated start date for projects at this rate would be late spring of next year, but.
Can any new people fill out surveys, or is it just the people that filled them out previously?
Surveys are still available, so I just added them to the EDA page on the website, and then I can have some paper copies available here, so we have, we have them in Hispanic format as well as traditional, so that's available for a commercial, a commercial application survey as well as a homeowner application or survey.
Any other questions? No, thank you. Item number three is business.
Don't we have to decide something there?
No.
Nope, just an update.
Okay.
Item number three is business incentives?
So you know, the city has homeownership incentives for first time, homeowners within city limits, and in order to try to mirror that as close as we could, we, I've worked with the EDA board on creating some business incentives to new businesses within Pelican Rapids, so they are similar, I have a form here, this is a recommendation from the EDA board, somebody is able to request two or less of these incentives, free utilities or reduced up to a year or five thousand dollars, whatever comes first, we offer the same thing to homeowners up to two thousand dollars. A tax rebate program, which is listed out after that, as far as what would be rebated back to the new business, and then af, it's just a three-year program, and then three would be wave utilities if they're on, you know, city street frontage and that's applicable, and then I left a number four because people might want something else, and I think it's good that they have the opportunity to share that, especially if they're trying to bring their business to Pelican Rapids versus our surrounding communities, so this is something that went to the EDA board twice, we modified it a bit, and then just a recommendation to you to approve. Any questions?
I move to approve the business incentives as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
So they can choose any two?
Mm-hmm, two or less.
And they choose like both one and two, year one and two on the tax incentive?
So I guess any two of like the, the bulleted numbers, so that tax incentive, they would qualify for all three years, and then in addition, they could do free utilities or street breakup.
Any other questions?
I think it's important to note that for number three, where you're talking about breakup fee, that, that wouldn't necessarily apply if you were on State Highway one oh eight or fifty-nine, because they're not, I mean, that would have to get involved with that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Good point. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four is Businesses Facade Improvement Program, there's a resolution number two zero two four dash one four, required resolution provisions for Ottertail County CDA Community Growth Partnership Grant Program.
The county CDA has a community growth partnership program for all of the cities within the county to take advantage of, it's broken down into five different categories, you can try to have a project through affordable housing, you can have a project to remove slum and blight, or you can have a project for commercial rehab, the city's used this last, was it last year, Lance? Last year for the new parking lot downtown?
Yes.
Privately owned parking, parking lot, what it is essentially is you get a one-to-one match from the county, up to twenty-five thousand dollars per project, so what I'm proposing is a new program through the EDA, a Business Facade Improvement Program, which would be beautifying buildings within the business district downtown, within the commercial zones of downtown, so maybe somebody wants to update their sign that has been there for probably too long, or they have some foundation issues, cracks, they want to do new siding on their building, et cetera, that's the gist of it, somebody could apply for this program, and they would also be required to have a one-to-one match, so they could get five thousand dollars out of this program, and then they would have to have five thousand dollars as well, so the EDA wouldn't be providing more money than the building owner would be putting forward. So in your packet, you should just have a breakdown of the program, and then the application that somebody would fill out.
The signs, the signs, if it, it's a good application.
I would have people, I would advertise them, so I would connect with people first is the goal always, but I'd like the applications to go through the EDA board with a recommendation to city council, because it's how our, our bylaws are written up right now, so city council would have final approval. So there's twenty-five thousand available locally through EDA funds, and then we would be requesting twenty-five thousand dollars of a grant from the county, and we haven't used the program this year, so there shouldn't be any hiccups.
I'll move adoption resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried, next item, Yard of the Week signs.
We've already approved some expenditures for gift cards through Yard of the Week, which is going great, I think people really enjoy it, and it's been fun for me to be able to drop off a gift card and a sign and see when people are home, how much they appreciate it, and like the small-town vibes of neighbors peeking over and seeing what's going on, I think that's hopeful, you know, the hopeful impact out of the program, I think it is working, if anything, people are talking about it. What I did do is buy some signs that I didn't originally ask for, so this is just a request to reimburse myself for Yard of the Week signs.
I'll make a motion to reimburse you for your Yard of the Week.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Now let's jump down to item number fourteen, pickleball courts, this is just an FYI item here, Jordan?
We have formed a group of Pelican Rapids and surrounding community members of people interested in putting some pickleball courts in town, part of this process is more than likely setting up a component fund at West Central Initiative, like what happened with the pool project, all of the donated funds went to West Central Initiative, were earmarked for Pool Project, and then they reimburse however the city has asked for that. The location that's been pinpointed for pickleball courts through the committee is by the Aquatic Center, behind the Aquatic Center, it seems that there's enough room there, so it would be on city property, so I wanted to make you aware of that, because I would like to have it reflected in the minutes that you're aware of this and on board as we move forward with fundraising efforts, and really solidifying that that would be the location for pickleball courts.
Are the, are the pickleball courts that were, we went over a few years ago, didn't we kind of reconfigure the tennis courts up at the school, are they being used at all?
They are being used a lot by after-school activities and throughout the school, these are some, this pickleball is a very serious sport for some people, and the layout of those courts, as, as I understand, are east to west, and they would like courts to be north and south, I guess that's the standard, so right now, there's a group of people like from Pelican Lake, et cetera, that go to other communities to play pickleball, and they would like to play them here, and when they're done playing pickleball here, go into town and hopefully spend some money here, so it was, it's been made clear that the city's not, unless you want to, that the city wouldn't be asked for any financial contribution, ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, just that the city could do something as far as an in-kind contribution of land space, so Lance has been a part of our meetings, Brian is a part of the committee as well, so we've looked at some site identification and, and just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as where the proposed site would be, so we can move forward with West Central Initiative fundraising efforts.
Do they have an idea of how much that would cost?
Two hundred thousand dollars would be a high estimate, but the best number I want to give you for four courts.
Are they in one compound then, or are they individual, they're like in one fenced-in area?
Mm-hmm, yep, east to west, four, four of them, right behind the pickleball courts or behind the pool, do you have any additional?
Individual fenced in as well, though, I mean, there'd be one big complex, but the courts would actually be split up with fences as well to keep.
We work balls from Pickle in Little Square?
Yeah.
Keep somebody else's pickle.
Yeah, and the estimated cost also includes maybe some possible sound barriers or fencing to help with pickleballs not ending up in the pool, et cetera, things like that, but we've just had two official meetings, I've had about four on this conversation, I think this is the next step, is just to have your awareness and approval to move forward, knowing that the courts would be on city property.
Here, I have a question.
Yes.
So we're, whether north of the pool or what?
Yeah.
Is that where the parking lot was going to be?
Correct.
So just so you're aware too, Pelican Valley has kind of tentatively approached us on maybe possibly putting a parking lot back in where it was supposed to be for the pool, you know? Because they're, they're, they're going to be doing a big renovation project and part of that project, they'd kind of like to have more parking. So they, they're probably going to be coming to ask to, to partner with us and put in a parking lot there of some sort so they could add some parking and we could use it for the pool, they could use it for their complex. So, and they've actually generated a little, a drawing of what it would look like with a, with a parking lot and a couple pickleball courts in there. And they kind of looked at that today at their meeting and things and, and made some suggestions and things. So, I mean, it's going to be ultimately up to the council, what do you want to do with that area? Right now, we'd be looking at approval of moving forward with some pickleball, possibly, depending on what Pelican Valley comes with. There would be room probably for some parking and some pickleball in this area. So here's the pool here, and it'll just be this whole area here is what we're talking about. So Pelican Valley, you know, right now, we gave them that temporary easement to put in a driveway here so they can access down here. So there could be a parking lot, partial of it, partially a parking lot, partial four courts of pickleball, so.
How much room are these pickleball courts going to take?
They have their measurements. They were looking at that today, I think, or they've, they've definitely, they definitely know their pickleball and they know what, what will fit and what won't and.
Isn't it roughly half the size of a traditional tennis court?
Yeah, but then they've got their, their, their preferences of, you know, the more, a little more room, the better, just in between the courts and things like that and room to move, but.
I just meant like one.
They have, yeah, one court. I can't remember what the dimensions are. I have it in the office there, but.
So that, excuse me, that area would be big enough for a parking lot and the four courts?
Possibly, yeah.
Do you have that picture you're talking about?
I, I don't think I, well.
Of the courts?
Hang on here.
I have one in my office.
Shoot, I don't have it on this disc here the way it looks.
Does the pool committee know about this? The people that got the pool going?
Um, there's a few members on the pickleball committee who are also on the pool committee. Like, um, a local banker in town has participated in it and I believe that one of the business owners in town, it was also on both committees as well.
So do we need to approve this, or do we need to?
Just have to say, yeah, we support you.
Yes. Setting up a component fund at West Central Initiative is going to need some type of acknowledgement and support from City Council since it's on city-owned land, the proposed site of these. So I'm just, uh.
You're looking for a motion?
An FYI, and I, I guess we could have a motion of your support to move forward. Look, we can say that.
With pickleball courts in this area, then that's nothing, that's all that you would need right now.
Yes, just some.
Or the parking lot.
No.
But we want to make sure we don't, we don't know just yet if there is room for a parking lot, and I believe a parking lot is necessary personally as well. So I would hate to approve pickleball courts.
So right now, Pel-.
Oh, we don't have enough room for a parking lot.
So at Pelican Valley, they have two pickleball courts in their drawing that, that would fit with the park, with a full parking lot, with parking on both the north and the south with a drive-through in the middle. So there could be many variations of that. You maybe only have parking on the north side and have more room for pickleball, or keep it the way it is with the majority parking and only a couple pickleball courts or whatever. But, I mean, there's a lot of different options and it seems there's.
Did they arrive at four for some mysterious pickleball reason?
I think it is a mysterious pickleball reason. I think that's the typical layout.
Sounds like if you build it, they will come and it's.
Well, right, but I mean, is there's, like, if you're, you're going to have a pickleball invitational, you know, do you have to have four courts in one location?
I would imagine so. That's, you know, the courts in Vegas that have four, Detroit Lakes, it's groups of four. So there must be some logic behind it.
Earhart just built just two, but.
We don't know if there's room for a parking lot, if it has to be four.
Forty-four feet long by 20 feet wide.
With no space between passing and this and that, it all expands.
We spent a zillion dollars on the pool, so where are the families with the little kids going to park and go to the pool? I just, not a lot of park. That got cut during the discussion with the pool. The park, yeah. But there was still, you could have classified gravel and park on there. I just. I'm just saying that that was one of the things that, that was one of the items that was removed because of cost. No, I, I. To try to get the project to move forward. Right, but I. I move that we approve the placement of pickleball courts on the city property behind the swimming pool.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion.
Do we have to decide tonight?
And there is no, yep, it's just your support so we can continue to try to set up a component fund at West Central Initiative. I doubt that they would be willing to take on that administrative burden without some city support behind it. So really, it's just, you're supportive of the idea of pickleball courts in this location if it's feasible. I would obviously be coming.
It's going to happen, but we're supportive of it.
We're in like the very first phase of this.
Acknowledging that.
Right, that would be okay with the decision.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Jordan, I got one more question about the housing. Is the county involved in some of this housing stuff?
They have a development up here, a nine-lot development. They are doing that in Pelican Rapids as well as possible additional sites in the future. What, can you be more detailed on your question?
Well, I know the county's looked, been looking at housing throughout the county because there's a shortage everywhere. So I'm just wondering what the county's.
Amy Baldwin was here at that final presentation of the, of the housing study, so.
Okay.
She was very aware of what was going on with the housing study and she was writing notes and things.
Uh huh.
And the, one other thing the county is probably doing is they're working with Habitat for Humanity for a possible project up on that lot out on 108 East, up on the hill just east of you there. The county owns a lot there and they're starting talks with Habitat for Humanity on that lot. So that's another thing they're doing in town, so.
Uh huh. Any housing plans will definitely include the county for any support that they can provide. I think we're fortunate to be within Otter Tail County that has such a strong HRA, so definitely a resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Let's go up to item number five, post office boxes. We have our Postmaster Tessa Nord here, and the reason she's here, there was talk about this at our last council meeting, and we were looking for a little more clarification, documentation. Being this, our 2024 Complete Streets Project, there was some mailboxes on, on Main Street and also 108 that had to be moved because the post, postal delivery person could not stop on the highway, so they're going to be moved at various locations. And it was, we were told that the city had to pick up the cost of the boxes and also maintenance of the boxes. So we asked Tessa to be here this evening to give us a little more clarification. Tessa?
Sure. So with this project that was been done, you have created a narrowing of Broadway or 59 and 108, which means that the carriers can no longer safely deliver mail to the mailboxes that were previously on that, on those roadways. You, there were options. You certainly could have chosen to have strings of mailboxes sitting all over town for these customers, but since it was the city's choice to narrow this roadway, it is the city's responsibility to provide mailboxes to these customers that no longer had the ability to have their free box right in front of their home.
I don't know if it was the city's choice.
I, I would concede that to you, however.
I think there's been a city choice in this.
It is, it was able to be part of your project, so those CBUs that are very nicely chosen and where they're put, they are being placed are good locations. There is some options for other customers in town to choose those if you want them to, but it is not a requirement. But the requirement is for the boxes that specifically could not be serviced any longer safely on 59 and 108.
And Tessa was involved with the relocation of those.
Yep, we've been working on this since way before it started.
Yes. Did you, the question was like, where does it say this has to happen?
Okay, so there are several locations that it's listed in the, it's called the Post Office Manual. Poom 620, 32 details the responsibilities for mail delivery. In specific, that one deals more with county-maintained roadways, but I've been dealing with that a lot because there's some customers that they too have had mailboxes in front of their homes, but their roads are no longer maintained by the county or professional individuals. And so that's the overreaching one for that. And then the responsibility is the safety to our employees. And so when safety is the factor, then changes have to be made. And if it's because of something that was chosen again by the city or the state in the changing of this roadway, that's, puts it on your shoulders than instead of the post office. We're not asking you to move them because it makes it more efficient for our delivery or economical for some reason for the post office to deliver.
So the, the purchase of the mailboxes where that was included in the project?
And the state picked up some of that as well. So some of it was city cost, but the state picked up, and I can't remember what the exact numbers were, but they went up to a point per mailbox that they paid and then we picked up the rest. So I think actually the state paid for a majority of the CBUs, but.
But not the future liabilities or replacements or.
Right, that's all on the city.
Keys, handling of keys.
That was the one.
Collection of rent.
Right.
That's the thing I don't.
There is no rent. You, it's a free mailbox. They, it's the, there is no rent for being in a CBU. The fee that you would have is if you wanted to collect a fee to recoup costs for giving customers a key. Okay? You have to give them a key, but they, you can tell them they have to pay you for that key. And that way, it can have as a deposit, partial as a deposit, so that way that you get it back, because otherwise you have to change the lock every time someone would move or a business would close.
We probably will have to do anyway because they will lose keys and take keys when they do move.
Yep, no, but it's what we deal with, within our PO box section and the few PO box, our central box units that the post office does handle because of economic reasons.
I don't understand why the city has to be involved in the key distribution portion of it. I mean, that's if it's.
Because you own the box? I certainly am willing, because in order for you to change a lock, the post office needs to be involved because you cannot open a box to change a lock without a post office secure key. So the post office has to be involved in any changing of a lock, and that costs a minimum of $50.
For box.
And per box you're changing a lock on. So I mean, we're willing to be involved in that, but we will not be administering keys or keeping track of keys. One other city I was told, when they had to take over this, they just gave all three keys of the lock to the customer, didn't require them to bring them back. And then if they lost them, they had to pay, you know, the city to pay the post office to change the lock.
So who is going to change the locks? You or us?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I will concede that since I have to be present when a lock is changed, I am willing to take on changing a lock for a fee of at least $50. Because that's the minimum cost of changing a lock right now.
Be from who?
You, or if you want to charge your constituent.
We're going to have to, we, so, so it's free though. We can't, we can't charge them to use the mailbox. We can only charge them to use a key.
Yep, you can only charge them for the key, and if you.
So much more expense involved here than a key or a $50 lock. I mean, you could say, you can use that mailbox, here's a $500 key. That won't even cover it. The added expense for, I will assume, I don't know who will be doling out the keys, but I would assume it would be the front office here at City Hall. The ice and snow within X number of feet of that. And when it gets slid into and somebody drives, how they drive, I mean, there, it is such a losing proposition. I think we should just give the people that have to use those $50 to go rent a PO box from the city and tear these things out.
Yeah, but that's, it's currently $36 for the smallest PO box for six months. So you're looking at.
Still way cheaper for us to do that in the long run.
How many people are we talking that are affected that need a mailbox?
That we are required because we took theirs.
Do you have my letter?
So there's about 19 listed right here total.
I think that's about right.
Then there's, there's actually five CBUs getting put in.
Uh huh.
So right now, with the one in, that was put in at Faith, there's 16 boxes there and technically three of them will be used right away.
So why do we put in so many extra then?
Because there will be the potential going down 59 of those residents and the box, you can't get much smaller than that and still have the parcel lockers attached to them.
So when, I was directed to the city of Sartell, so I called them and asked them about this, and they do have some, the lady I talked to, they have CBUs all over. She wasn't even certain that they were city-owned or anything, but they, they had to put them in because of these street projects and things like that, but they do not deal with the keys at all, they said. So I'm wondering how they got to where, to that point.
I don't know either. When did they do the projects?
Since within the last five years, there's been several of them, she said, so.
I mean, that would be your way to deal with the proj, I mean, not having to deal with keys. You just give them the, all the keys and then you have to pay the post office $50 to change the lock every time somebody moves.
But we still have the keys to the, ones that are not being used.
So we have 19 people that need mailboxes and one mailbox we put in has 16 boxes.
But they have to be within a certain radius of where.
So do they have smaller ones? I mean.
There's some smaller ones that are going in. What is there, 16 or 12 or whatever?
I think 12 is the smallest and then, but 16, I think 16 or 20 is going in at Sixth Street Northeast because that's, was one of the bigger ones, and then the other one goes in next to the Pelican Motel.
So they've already been manufactured, right Lance?
Well, they're in, I mean, they're in the main plan of the whole 59.
No, but I mean, have they been made? Because.
No, I think they're bought, they're not made. They have.
No, but I mean, they're ours already.
One of them is, it's sitting on Fifth Faith right now, but.
We had to order them all. We had to order them all several months ago.
Yeah, so I'm sure they're, they might be at Landwear.
Send them back and send me one smaller ones.
That, that could be an option yet on the other board.
I don't think the city should be involved in the post office business at all. I don't think we should be handing out keys or taking deposits or contacting the post office because we need locks changed. I just, I think that's not a city thing. I'll, I'll give it over that the boxes had to be removed because of the project that the city got involved in. I'm not going to say we had a choice in any of it, but I don't, I don't think we, we should be involved. I think there's too much liability involved with, I mean, lost mail. Who's responsible for lost mail? Getting run over, we have to replace them already. I just, I, I don't think we should be involved in key distribution or any of that. That's post office business.
It's slipping falls, well, simple liability. You slip when you go get your mail because it's icy and some people don't realize and they get a head injury.
they get a head injury, and they end up in a nursing home, probably we're gonna have to pay for a large chunk of that. As we put that mailbox there and we own it, and we're responsible for it. I, I think it's...
But you're gonna have the same liability if somebody's just walking down the sidewalk.
Maybe. There's some loopholes in that law. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's come up, but they didn't hit their head on a mailbox that the city made, that we have to have there. I mean, it's not, I'm not being, making a joke, that, that it's happened with sidewalks in this town.
But other entities do have to be responsible for the CBUs that they purchase, and the keys and the locks. For example, the Westfield Apartments, 301 Seventh Street, 520 Third Street, they, the administrator for the apartments has to contact me, and I come out, and then they change the locks, and they distribute the keys and take care of it. It's their responsibility, it's their boxes.
And he pays you to change the lock?
Are they in them?
He doesn't choose to do that. They take care of it themselves.
Are they in them apartment buildings or outside?
Huh?
Are they within the building, like a lot of apartment buildings, they're within...
Those, those particular ones are.
Yeah, well, there's a lot less slip and fall likelihood and, and, uh, long-term liability.
Well, Tessa didn't come up with this stuff.
No.
She's just telling us.
I'm just telling you what the United States Postal Service says, what, you know, this federal entity that I am blessed to work for says this is what, the way it is. So, you know, like I said, I am willing to go as far as that, you know, I'll, I'll change locks for you, you know, for the $50 fee minimum that I have to do, but... And the key thing is not as difficult as it sounds. There's key lockers or whatever that are on sale on eBay, on Amazon or whatever, that you can just put them in, and you just label them, and then, you know, when people come in, they swap them out.
Wait, Tessa, where, I lost you there. Where would that box be or what?
You could buy a box that you keep all the keys in, and it, it's set up to hold keys, and you just label each key location, and then that way, when the person comes in, they say what their address is, and then you, you know, administer the key to them or swap them out. And with, what the post office does with PO boxes and the CBUs that we are responsible for is that they, when they get the key, they pay a deposit. And it's not a cheap deposit, it's like $10 or $12 per key, okay? And that way, when they bring the key back, so that I, we don't have to change a lock or don't have to have as serious a conversation about changing a lock, then they get a portion of that deposit back.
Are we limited on the amount we can require for down payment?
No.
Well...
Well, that would get our...
Well, it has to be within, I suppose, a feasible, you know what I mean? You can't say $500 deposit on these keys, but I, I wouldn't think that, you know, $100 or something couldn't be reasonable. Because that too would ensure that they would keep track of them. I find $12 isn't enough, but I don't get to pick that amount.
They heard a lock, to change the lock. I mean, I think, I think the minimum would be $50, so we could cover the lock change.
Okay.
We should do that at least.
It seems like, I mean, I don't know. And the ridiculousness is just beyond me through this whole thing. Make MINDOT hand out the keys, they're the guys that cause the problem.
So people are getting their mail in these new CBUs already?
Not yet, because that one went up, and no one's received a key yet.
So where are they getting their mail?
The temporary boxes that the MINDOT put up while the construction was going on, that have to go down. Now, technically, they probably could have, should have gone down before now, but since we haven't finalized everything with that CBU so that they've gotten their keys, because we can't start delivering mail if we knew that they couldn't access it.
Where's the new one?
It's right in Faith Church. Faith Church and, right on Fifth and 59, right by the stop sign, or stop crossing the lane.
Danielle, do you see a big problem administering this?
I mean, it's gonna be a little more work for us.
So if these get vandalized, there's still a US mailbox?
Yeah, it's a federal offense.
Even if they're privately owned by the city?
Because mail is involved in it. And if a car runs into it, I mean, their insurance is responsible for their negligent driving.
If they're, if insured.
Well, if insured.
If they stop.
But technically...
They stop.
Although, it's, if they hit a CBU, it's a pretty substantial object to be struck. So I mean, it would be pretty evident who it was that did it.
You're right about that. We knock over about four a year.
Well, that's the thing. Our, our... Could take them out, but we're still, we're gonna be replacing them.
You still gotta replace them.
How much were they at Peace?
Uh, the, couple thousands of dollars, like for that 16, I think was $2,000.
And hopefully whoever hits it or destroys it is insured.
And then it's not one of our plow drivers.
True. That's, who does it at our place.
So MINDOT, I found that MINDOT was paying $200 per mailbox, so...
Per person's mailbox.
For each individual box.
For each individual.
So that was 19, yeah.
So for that 16 box one, actually, that 16 box one, they paid up to $3,200 for that one. So, and I think that, yeah, that 16, 16 was more than $3,200.
They paid us $200 for somebody else's mailbox?
That was their share of...
It's a pretty good racket.
Yeah, that's, that was their share of paying for these CBU units, so...
Okay. I still think we're not, we shouldn't be in the post office business, but that's just me, I guess.
Well...
I don't, you know...
We're gonna have to do something about it, so...
The only ones that are gonna suffer if we don't are the people that, they don't have anywhere to get their mail, unless they slip up to the post office and, like I said, short of us paying for their annual post office box bill.
So are we, just to throw this out there, are we gonna be responsible for somebody else coming to say, well, you're spending taxpayer dollars on their mailbox, can I get a new mailbox too for our neighborhood? Are we gonna have to put these up all over town?
Could happen.
Uh, not if it was a requirement of a safety issue through the federal government, you know?
Yeah, but I'm saying, I mean, we're still spending, it doesn't matter if it's federal government or state government or city government, it's all taxpayer dollars that we're spending.
Could there be a petition from a neighborhood, they wanted their CBU, and we'd have to adopt it?
Not the city. I mean, they can, I mean, that's, right now, that's one of the other locations. Like I said, there was another safety issue in the Pelican Rapids area, so those, the residents on that road had to put the money up together to not only buy the CBU, but put the cement down and administer the keys themselves. Matter of fact, that one's gonna get their locks the same time as the next one around here. So, and so they're completely, if they want a CBU, they certainly can get it, but then they're responsible for that.
And then a citizen in that neighborhood would distribute the keys?
And cover liability and replacement.
I think we need to be prepared to have some kind of...
Something written up that...
Something prepared that says that just because we bought those, we're not necessarily responsible for buying anybody else's. And I, could it happen? Who knows? Could we have 14 that come tomorrow and call? Probably.
Well, but 14 that came tomorrow would be choosing to have a CBU over their mailbox as opposed to having a inability of the federal government to continue to deliver mail the way their mailbox was, because all the rest of them were okay with where they're at and how they're being delivered.
But what I'm saying is, if, if their argument is, well, you're spending our taxpayer dollars on those mailboxes for these people, we're also taxpayers in this community, so we should have the same opportunity.
But they shouldn't, because we would have never done that if we weren't forced to due to a MINDOT project.
But we need to be, you need to be prepared for those phone calls. We don't get those kind of phone calls, but...
We still have to make a decision tonight.
Well, I'll move, we charge everybody $25 for the key, and then we administer the keys up here. She's been good enough to say that if their locks have to be changed, they'll do that, so...
For each key? Because there's three keys.
Well, that would cover a lock replacement, should they not all come back? Because even if one of the three doesn't come back, you have to change the lock, correct? So I think we gotta cover our expense. Exactly right.
And if they only take one key and don't bring that one back?
Well, and you don't have to give them all three keys, but you can, you can, and that way you don't have to worry about it. We would definitely just change the lock if all three D keys didn't come back.
If they take all three keys, they're talking a $75 deposit.
Yeah.
We may want to require them to take all the keys associated with the lock, so that if they don't come back...
Yeah.
We can cover the cost of the lock change and the administrative duty of having to dole it out and record who's got it. It doesn't matter to me if they lose one or all three, the same thing has to happen, the expense of changing the lock.
Well, Steve... Does that sound reasonable to you?
I think you're being very generous to the constituents that will be in the CBUs.
For $25, is that what you're...
$25 per key, yeah.
Per key.
And there's a three-key deal.
And they have to take the three keys or...
No, they can only take one if they want to. But let's say it's a couple there with a kid or something, so they each have a key to the post office box.
And if they lose the first one, they gotta come back and pay for the second.
Yeah.
What's the deal with, uh, kind of a sidebar, but I've always been curious. When I go buy these, which I go buy many every day...
CBUs?
Yeah. There's, we'll say there's 16. There's nine of them up there, the keys stay in the lock.
That's the parcel lockers. Those...
They're all over the mailbox, though. They're not, they're, some are small, some are big.
Right, but if the key is stuck in the lock, that's a parcel locker. The key that the post office has, there's two locks on each of those, and the key that the post office has turns the other lock to release that key. So when somebody has a package, we deliver the package to the parcel locker, use our key to remove that parcel locker key to put in their mailbox, then when they take the key out of their mailbox to that parcel locker, they turn the key, and that locks that key back in the thing. It cannot be removed until we come with our key again to remove it, and that way we can keep using it over.
Have you noticed any trouble with people snapping them keys off in the locks?
Nope, the parcel lockers that we have in, the parcel lockers that we have at the post office have been working fantastic, and we have a policy that if someone takes a key, for example, and doesn't know what it was for, and take it home and throw it in the truck or, you know, whatever, they don't get any mail or packages until that key comes back, and we would have that same policy, because we want to have those parcel lockers turn over so that everybody has an equal opportunity to have their packages secured in the parcel lockers.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Is that enough? I, it seems kinda cheap to me, but...
Well, it doesn't cover our replacement costs.
Yeah, it does.
One key, if they want one key, it's $25. If they lose that key, leave with that key, we're out $25 to change that lock and to throw the other two keys away that they didn't take.
Oh, okay, I see where you're going with that.
That's why I said $75 would at the minimum replace the lock.
And our administrative...
And our administrative fee for having to spend the time to give the key out, and, I mean, if they, if they bring it back, they can have their ownie back. Great, we don't need it. I mean, it's, you know, it's a, it's kind of a steep amount, $75 for many, but it's really just gonna hang out until you bring your key back. And it gives someone incentive to not lose that key.
Can I say something?
Is there, is there a second to the motion? Are you s...
Well, maybe I should restate it, I'll go $75 in.
You made your motion to say...
Yeah, I'm changing my motion. We'll throw the first one away.
Okay, wait a second. Chief, did you have something?
I'd recommend that all the keys go out, because you take, you take all or none, because the city doesn't need to be any allegation that something was taken out of a mailbox by a key that we retained. Because if they're in the office, they could, they could allege that one of the office staff went down there, opened the mailbox with, with our key, and they have them all.
And, and a caveat to that is, they wouldn't have to come up and bother Danielle or whoever's issuing the keys out when they can't find their key on Saturday morning, or Monday morning, so they come up to give the one that we're storing for them. Possibly that's a good idea to...
I think that's a good idea.
Require all three go with it.
How about we person that just wants one key?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Well, they have to take all three, you know, I mean, we do that with the post office too. I mean, they have to take two keys when they come in, they don't have the option to take just one.
So if we're looking at $75 a key, we have three keys, that's $225.
No, you were saying $25 a key, right, for 75?
Yeah, 75 bucks, that's 25 bucks per key, they get to hold them all.
Okay.
So 25, or $75 per box, not necessarily...
Yep, per box.
Per box, yeah.
And we'll give all keys out at the same time?
I don't know why not.
The three keys?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Anything, I mean, I'm here if you have any other questions.
Nope, we're getting close to cats and...
You don't, you don't think that that dollar value that we're putting on it is gonna just sticker shock somebody, you know, do you? I mean...
No, because like I said, with the post office, there is a deposit plus a fee. So, you know, a $25 administration fee plus a $75 deposit for the keys would not be unreasonable.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same? Motion carried. Thanks, Tessa.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to item number eight, library discussion. Lance is gonna head that up. We're looking at two different motions here. One is resignation of a librarian, also appointment of new library board, board members. Lance?
Yeah, so I think the first thing, we got the letter from Annie stating her resignation. I think we just need the motion to approve.
I'll move to accept her resignation. Second?
Motion second, discussion, discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions. I don't know if anybody can answer them. Do you know, is there any type of an exit interview lined up with Annie, or would she be willing to provide one? There's been a, kind of a small mass exodus out of the library, and that, that isn't typical. So I'm pretty sure there is some underlying reasons that we, I think would be important for us to try to uncover. At this point, I've been unsuccessful in my own digging, but I think, I think a truthful exit interview might shed some light on what's been going on, why this happened so bang, bang, bang. I'm kinda curious. Unless I'm the only one in the dark on the matter, which I don't think is the case.
Yeah, I mean, there's certain, we have an exit, exit interview most, or the, a forum in there that I can certainly sit down with her, I'm sure she's very willing to do that.
That'd be good, I mean, I, as, I personally would like to see what happened, or know what happened. It came as quite a surprise to me. I didn't hear a thing about it until it was it. Just wanna make sure there's something that we're not missing as a city that we could have assisted in fixing or, or not fixing, but at least be aware.
Okay, with you Lance?
Yeah, I mean, I was kinda planning on doing that anyway, but I've been, I mean, I've been meeting with her weekly and things, but there's, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same? Motion carried. Uh, the second one, uh, appoint new li... Uh, the second one, appoint new library board members, I had two interviews with interested people, Kate Woolover Martinez and David Ellison. I've interviewed both of them, and they're extremely interested to serve on the library board, so I present those names here this evening.
Dave Ellison?
I'll move, we accept or appoint Dave and Kate to the library board.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion?
I interviewed both of them, too, and I think they'd be good additions to the library board.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same, motion carried, thank you. Uh, let's go to item number ten, beings are talking about Library League of Minnesota City's Collaboration Services Proposal, which was in her packet. Lance, you wanna head that up?
Yeah, so this is from Amy Gorley, the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust to Collaboration Services. We've been talking about this for several months now, this is the proposal that she sent. I still think it's, it'd be good to move forward with this, especially with new library board members. We'll have a new library director in the future, just to really solidify what, I mean, the responsibilities and duties of all the positions, and just to get everybody on the same page again and moving forward. She is very experienced, and I think it would be still a great thing to move forward with.
Any questions to Lance?
This was one of the things that we talked about at the board, library board meeting. This was, this person, Amy Gorley, was the, she was gonna be the mediator between the staff and the director and the board and the council. She was heading up that, that portion. And the, the library board approved going forward with that also to.
I don't know.
To, uh, through the, through the search process from the new director. So I've moved to approve the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust Collaboration Services.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same, motion carried, thank you.
Actually, two other things under this library I'd like to just touch on. So at the library board meeting, the library board itself kind of approved the hiring of two more part-timers to cover some shifts, so I think the council would have to approve that, they are city employees, so you'd have to approve hiring up the two more part-time employees to, to staff the library in this interim while there's no director. That, and then they also talked about there might be possibly some times here and there where there would only be one employee at the library at a time, so I'd like to just discuss, I think maybe the council should, I don't know that there's anything in writing that says that there can't be, but I know there's been discussion before, safety issues and things, so make sure everyone's comfortable if there are times that there could only be one employee there at a time in this interim.
And I, I think during that, if I remember right, during the, in, in, all, all three library employees were at the last board meeting, so they were part of the board meeting and they were part of the discussion, and they, the, the library board approved using volunteers to, to work, not necessarily behind the counter, but in, in auxiliary roles that the, the employees would have them, have them do, step, you know, restacking or shelving books or whatever the case may be, so.
You mean, kind of acting as a second, then, in the library?
Right, so, and if I remember right, they're saying that if there were one employee that was scheduled, that would be the time that they would be trying to utilize the volunteers to come in to, to be a second body in there.
There still may be some gaps there where.
Sure.
There would be only one in there.
How did the current staff feel about that, then? Because I know some wonky things happen in a library, and to be alone, you never know.
And they're all comfortable with it, they were fine with it, but like I said, there would be very limited times, I believe, that that would happen, and, but it could happen, so I just wanted you guys to be aware.
And they already had a, it sounded like they had a working list of volunteers that were really, that are already willing to come in and, and fill in some of those spots. So I don't, I don't know if we need to approve using, or if, I don't think we were involved in any of that any before.
Yeah, I don't, does, does any of that liability, again, since they're city employees working there, are they considered adjunct city employees or just volunteers?
They're volunteers. They just be volunteers, yeah. What would you, what you would need to, a motion on is, is the two, hiring up to two part-time employees.
They don't have names now for the.
No.
No, they haven't, I don't think they've advertised for it yet, or, so I.
One of them came up here, so I know who one of them is.
They have, they have, I, I didn't think they had advertised for it yet, because it just happened last Thursday.
I don't think they're actually gonna even advertise it, there was a couple previous ones that were, could be, wasn't there?
Uh, yeah, I know one, I mean, the one that came up here, she had worked there previously.
So you're looking for a motion to hire two part-time employees?
Up to two part-time.
I'll move, we permit the library to hire up to two part-time people.
I'll hear a second.
All second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same, motion carried. Let's go up to item number nine, review 2025 budget, and here we're looking for two different motions. The first one's to approve the preliminary budget for 2025, and then the second motion is to set a public hearing. Uh, Danielle, Lance, you wanna take it away?
I just wanna say one thing before we even start here, that, so if we, if we were to take the pool out of the equation here from last year to this year, if we were to leave it the same, so if we were to just take the pool out, we'd actually be reducing the budget by like two thousand dollars. So if we were to take the increased operating expense that we're gonna need for next year and the special levy increase, if we were to take that money out, we'd actually be basically level of what we were last year. So that's the entire increase, that entire sixteen-some percent is.
Cool.
Cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
To comment on that, they'd just be kicking the can down the road a little bit, right? Because it's gonna come back next year.
Right.
Yeah.
Just an observation. Well, I guess I'll start with, does, does anybody have any questions? Or should I just, how do you wanna approach this? Just go through everything lightly again?
Why don't you review everything from where we were last time? Start at the top.
Okay, I think he's gonna put a different screen up that has the last couple years on it. Okay, so, we'll just. So I'll start with the expenses first. Again, 2024, we're looking at the first six months of expenses, so I have 2023 up here as my comparison also. Not a whole lot changed in council, administration stayed the same. We need new computers, because they won't be supported in 2025, so, um, basically administration is all getting new computers, or scheduled to get new computers next year. So the increases that you do see are mostly wages, um, insurance, some of it is a little bit for websites and publication. Accounting went down. We talked about police union negotiations, that'll be due again, the end of, or you'll be doing that sometime in 2025. Planning and zoning, we talked about putting ten thousand dollars in for the professional services to do any kind of engineering services or other professional services that may come up in 2025. It's gonna be 2025 already. City Hall expenses that we covered, um, basic, you know, normal stuff, the only thing we added differently was the door entry system, which Todd talked to you about, but that actually decreased, or the total overall budget decreased from 2024. Todd had talked about adding a fifth police officer, but we had taken that off the budget. Police, uh, the siren, hopefully getting that siren replaced, we'd have to pay eight thousand dollars would be the city share, but he's still looking into other options. Street. Capital is the Bobcat and F-250 lease payments. He also needs a computer, the Greco line laser, and sweeper drive tires and generator for the shop, uh, door is what he has in his capital list. You can see that we took out the equipment fund and the pay around public works. Dust guard continues to go up, so we had to increase that a little bit. That stayed the same. Storm drain went down because we have finished that sec, the second avenue storm drain project this year, but there's two storm drain issues that he still has to, would like to resolve in 2025. Street lights, we will still have in 2025. Here's the pool for next year, we're guestimating one-hundred-and-ten-thousand in operating expenses for 2025.
We're carrying over that twenty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah.
That we're thinking this year, that'll be left over since there weren't many operating expenses at the pool. So that is getting carried over to next year to help with that as well.
Yeah, so that'll be applied towards those expenses. In parks, we actually cut a lot out of the capital. We have the normal stuff where we replace weed whackers and push mowers as needed. Half of Brian's computer gets paid out of parks, also still saving for suspension bridge repaints, mulch for the bridge, north of the bridge in Peterson Park, boring in the sprinkler in Peterson Park, and then we cut all of that stuff, which was the dog park fencing, brush more, Bobcat, landscape rake, the updates for Sharon Park, which was seventy-five thousand, was cut, and then the Peterson Park play in, or in play, I think is what it's called, and that was twenty-five thousand, so all of that stuff got cut. And then we put, we're gonna put another five thousand for the plans to paint the suspension bridge project. Historic City Hall lowered that budget because we'll be leasing it out next year, but the, um, the roof needs to be replaced and the deck needs to be re-levelled, is that kinda what he said?
Could be new decking on there, but that got taken out.
Yeah, we took that out for 2025 and then left the roof in, because that was more, uh, needed to be done. So that's the budget for Historic City Hall. Economic development, we looked at, um, she's at, our economic development person is at three days now, so we have the cost for that, and then we got the cost for four days, and when we looked at it, we went with the three days and entered that budget in. So we're at three days with her, and then, um, we also entered, added in five thousand dollars for the housing incentives that we are offering people now for new homeowners that move to town. And then this is the thirty thousand dollars for consulting and planning, that could also be used for, if we have to hire consulting for, you know, it was, could be used for a housing study like we did this year, or engineering, if we need to hire engineering, and then the CEDA contract for 2025 is the seventy-two thousand. So our total economic development budget for 2025 is the two-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars, and then our other miscellaneous expenses, which is ambulance, we left at thirty-two thousand five hundred. Condominium expense is still at three thousand, nothing really changed here. Library, um, last year they asked for new flushing mechanisms, so this year it's only the snow removal, and then their library levy transfer, they asked for an additional nine thousand seven hundred in wages, and then eleven thousand three hundred dollars in building insurance, for a total of two-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars to be transferred to the library in 2025. Insurance total for, and bank charges for next year will be a hundred-and-three thousand, and then airport, airport expenses stay the same, but Brian would, is going to put, I would like to put three cameras in, and that'll be fifteen hundred dollars, but we've got a lot of airport funds in the, um, on the investment sheet that he'll use those for. And then we'll go back up to the top and look at the revenues a little bit. Right here, you can see the, um, this is the special levies, so these are all the projects here, the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, that's just the pool payment alone, and so the special levy alone is four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six, four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars is for the special levy. We'll be transferring in a hundred thousand dollars from the liquor store sales. We'll be transferring in, um, $100,000 from the liquor store sales and then 75,000 out of, um, general fund reserves. And then that, the $25,000 that'll be left over from the pool this year and to go towards next year's pool expenses. Um, other things I increased is the interest earnings. I increased it another 20,000, up to 60,000. Um, I put, uh, swimming pool fees and concessions and stuff back in because I had taken it out for 2024. Local government aid increased ever so slightly. Whereas most things are. We sold one more liquor license this year. And so then, um, then, so the general tax, general property taxes, this is the number that we came up with. So, any questions? Comments?
How much do we have in the general fund reserve?
That sheet I don't have with me. Last packet. I should have brought that with me. Do you want to give me a minute and I can go get it?
Yeah, I'll give you a minute.
I have the last packet.
Oh, I can find it online, I bet.
I've got it right here.
Any other questions while Danielle's looking for that?
That's why.
I can get it online.
I was shocked at the library insurance, 11,300. Does it, how does that compare with anything else?
I think a lion's share of library insurance involves the collection itself.
Really?
No, it's going to be, um, my insurance.
That's all bought through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance.
Yeah, but I mean, that's why libraries are expensive, the collections are, I mean, if it got wet or burned or need to be replaced, I don't think you'd replace the collection down there for 11,000.
No, no.
Yes, will smoke damage be bad?
We pay for reserves.
1.6.
I think we have to maintain 1.6 in the general fund.
Yep. So as of the end of, um, August, it was about 2 million.
Do you have a, was the library budget included in the packet?
Not in, it was included in the last packet.
That's what I got right here, so.
So on the sheet that I was given for the library, the proposed, the proposed 2025 budget has that, has that 225 as the city funding and then the proposed for 2025 is 242, 225, correct? And on the budget?
264.
Yeah, on the budget, the city budget is.
264.
Said at 264. My, am I not reading that right or am I missing something?
Why, why am I trying to look up there when proposed?
This was the budget that was discussed at the library board.
Matches our $30,000.
There's the increase.
More than what's in the current, is what you're saying?
Well, yeah, the budget that Danielle just went over has the, the transfer at, uh, 264, 264, 650. Yeah. So I just, I'm, I'm trying to, and then it has a total budget, total operating expense budget of 310,554.
So where's the difference? Because I just added the 20,000 to last year's.
She just has the operating expenses. The difference there is that 20,977.34, is that the difference from last year to this year?
I get, I, you know, I'd have to look into it a little bit further. I just added the, because if you look, I added the 11,300 for insurance.
Yep, and that's stated right here.
Yep, and then I added 9,700 for wages.
That's the combination of these three.
To last year's.
So then it should be up around 264, right? That sheet is wrong there where it says 242 for proposed 2025?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because that must be what it is now.
Well, yeah, it says budget, budget 2024 is the, is that 242, but then it also says in the next column of proposed for 2025 of staying the same.
Yeah.
But the budget you just presented at 264 or, yeah, 264, 650.
Yeah, and, and that they are requesting, right, or that's what I was told, uh, an additional 21.
Makes sense, probably for increased wages, insurance elevation, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a typo that's been uncovered, that's all.
And I know they talked at the board of cutting that snow removal fee out of 1,400 something. Where is it? I believe it's already been paid for this coming year, this coming winter though.
2024, 25 winter. 2025, 2026.
Perfect. So.
So, and I know you all know this, I'll just say it for everybody else. Um, budget has to be passed, preliminary budget has to be passed today. Um, we can't go up from here. Um, we can go down, um, before passing the final one in December, so.
So we can pass this as is and then we'll talk at the full board. We could make cuts. A full board, library board meeting, we can talk about.
So if you decided you don't need that 1,400, we can cut that.
Councilman Foster, you asked about that reserve. Did you have something in mind?
Well, we could take actually more money out of that if we wanted to.
Right now we're pulling 75,000.
Yeah. I was just looking at the, at the budget. We could put, um, our general budget has got a 7.5% increase. If we wanted to keep that neutral from last year, we'd have to bring 75,000 in.
An additional?
Yeah, or 75,000 in cuts.
So what you said, Danielle just said, you've already taken 75? Would that be an additional 75 then?
Yeah.
Other than general?
Yeah. Or you could do a combination. You could take 25,000 from the general reserve and then fine 50,000 in cuts if you wanted to keep that neutral. The committee tried very hard to keep it down. We cut a lot of people, I mean, Todd came in with a, wanted to hire, we cut that, you know, we cut a lot of different things to keep it as neutral as we could, so.
So what are the pros and what are the cons of taking an additional 75,000 out?
We have to maintain about 1.6 million in the reserve fund for our expenses. We've got about 2 million in there now, so we've got plenty of money to work with there. But if you keep taking that money out of there, it's not going to get replaced, so, you know.
Yeah.
But if we keep putting that money in there, what are we going to use it for?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you always have to have six months' worth of operating expenses.
That's where the one, that's where the 1.6 comes from.
Yeah, you, you always hope to have, that's the goal, to have six months' worth of operating expenses.
And we'd have that if we took 75,000.
Yeah.
An additional 75,000.
So, yeah, so the total removal or the total withdrawal from the general fund would be 150,000.
Yeah.
So what would bring that?
Certainly be a discussion for December. I don't know that you want to do it now though, right? I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just presenting some options here.
There's a, and there's other options too, we can, that we can look at to bring this lower if we need to, but right now I think it's a good one, good place to be, knowing that you can't raise it, but you can lower it.
Any other comments or questions?
So the, the discussion where we talk Steve's option or what other options that you have up your short sleeves, um, that would, that discussion would be on that December 10th?
Yeah, yeah.
Public hearing meeting?
Yeah. Or anytime.
Anytime in between, right?
Yeah.
That's the deadline to.
It would have to be passed by then, but, yeah, we could, we could discuss it every meeting until then if we wanted.
We probably will.
John has a question.
I have a question. John Haller, I have a question. So you're going to hire a new library director, but you don't know what you may have to or may not have to pay that person. So is that 7,000 that they're asking for the library increase in their wages going to be enough? Or how are you going to figure that or how do you?
I don't know. I didn't help decide that number, but I was thinking about it.
Because that was the number they had before any of this, this all happened.
But I was, you know, life, uh, the administrator had been here a long time, right? Top of the pay scale, I imagine.
Actually with her, she's not quite at the top with that, with the whole new wage study there. Um, she's either at seven, step seven maybe right now.
But the likelihood of hiring somebody in anywhere near that is pretty low.
But then you're also hiring two part-time people too. And how long are those part-time people going to be employed? So you have to consider that in your budget too.
So they'll be part-time on-call, correct? And then, well, so Annie's last day will be November, technically with, when she uses her vacation and things, so through November. So technically you'll probably have November, December, possibly without paying a library director, so there should be cushion there to pay for the part-timers for sure.
But then.
There should be.
But then next year though.
Right, and it all depends on where you start that new library director, you're right.
It could be January, February, it could be March.
Yeah.
The goal is January 1, the library board decided.
The board set a goal of January 1 for.
And I think that's feasible.
Yeah.
I'm just optimistic.
I'm still optimistic.
But I just wanted to give you something to think about that.
So does anyone want to entertain a motion to approve this preliminary budget for 2025?
I'll move we accept the preliminary budget as is right now.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Puts the same. Motion carried. Uh, the second motion we're looking for is the public hearing to pass the final budget on December 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM here at City Conference.
It's more of just an FYI. It just has to be said aloud.
Oh.
Yep, sorry.
Oh, no motion?
Nope, no motion needed.
Okay. Do you want to explain the reason it's at 6:00 PM?
State says we have to have it at 6:00 PM or later, so.
But it could be November too, right?
Um, it has to be December 1st through.
Okay.
Um, December 10th or something like that.
And is it posted, you know, so people know that they would come at 6 if they want to?
It will be listed, it will be posted, but it'll also be listed on your tax statement.
I'm assuming that's why, give people the opportunity after work or whatever.
We've had other public hearings at earlier times, but this is because it's taxation, we got to have it at 6:00 PM at the earlier. Item 11, Administrator Report.
All right, since the last meeting I worked with the clerk and mayor, get the agenda and council meeting stuff. Attended the 59108 construction meetings in open houses. Attended the pool construction meeting. Jordan and I met with Ottertail County Community Development Representatives and discussed the big build initiative, Pinewood Estates and some, and the small cities development program. Attended an EDA and EDC meeting. Attended the final presentation of the housing study put on by CEDA. Uh, met with library employees and discussed scheduling options moving forward. Met with the library director, created a draft supplemental application and scoring, scoring sheet for the library director position. Attended the monthly municipal solar cohort put on by West Central Initiative. Attended the special meeting held by the library board. Uh, worked, worked with Justin from Cutoc Rock on getting the closing documents needed to finalize the PFA funding for the 59108 project. Uh, attended an online Eagle View Connect Explorer training put on by Ottertail County. And then Danielle and I met with People Service today and started talking about the 25, 2025 water and sewer budgets. Any questions?
Thank you.
How's that, is it called the delineation where they're trying to find out the?
Yep, the wetland stuff. I just saw, uh, Bob Schleeman of Apex just sent an email today trying to figure out, or to the company, um, requesting when they're going to get that done, so.
It hasn't even started yet.
I didn't, no, no.
Okay, thanks Lance. Uh, item number 12, mayor report, just a few, a couple, three items. Attended the Pelican Rapids Housing Study Meeting here at City Hall on September 12th. Interviewed, uh, potential library board directors, Kate Williver Martinez and David Ellison last week. Facilitated the Pelican Rapids Economic Development Authority Meeting here at City Hall on the 18th of September and yesterday met with Administrator Royson to set the agenda for this evening's council meeting.
Thank you.
Did they get notified, they, meaning Dave and Kate, did they get notified of the special meeting that will be on Thursday?
They will. I got a couple, is that the chairman's duty or?
I mentioned a special meeting.
Sorry?
The chairman's duty or what?
I've got a packet for each one of them too, for some things before the meeting as well, so I'll make sure to get these to them and notify them.
I mentioned a special meeting, but I didn't give them a specific date.
It wasn't the same, wasn't at the same time as?
Thursday at 6, yeah.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other business, motion to adjourn? Second. Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Puts the same. Meeting adjourned. Puts the same, meeting adjourned.